To the April 28, 2022, meeting of the Town Southampton Planning Board. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic in accordance with Chapter One of the laws of 2022, and at least until June 2022, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely via video conference. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. Can you please join in for a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic of which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Gloria. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board member Long is absent. Board member Catalinato.
Present.
Board member Mutu.
Present.
Board member Neely.
Present.
We have a call, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have four public hearings this evening. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will be muting and holding the speakers in a virtual waiting room until it's their time to give testimony before the board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking should state their name and address for the record. A further reminder that despite the Zoom environment, all comments should be directed to the board and not to other participants. The link to participate in this meeting via Zoom can be found on the town's website. This meeting is also being livestreamed on the town's website on the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal. If you're having difficulty accessing the meeting, please visit the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Public comments can be made via Zoom, by email, or by uploading them to the Town Clerk's portal on the planning board's page. You'll see on that page a button you can click to upload your comments. Please do not use Zoom chat function to register your comments. Any comments made via the chat function will not be included in nor made part of the record. Instead, you may either speak at the hearing or submit your comments in writing after the hearing. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting after the hearing. Additionally, in accordance with legislation, these hearings will be recorded and transcribed and will be made available to the public. So for tonight, we have, we're going to look at Key Capture Energy subdivision and site plan together. And I, we do not need notice. Is that correct, Council?
Sorry, Madam Chair. We had the proper notice. We required a posting for both the applications which we got. And we don't need an additional mailing as the hearing is an adjourned hearing from a prior hearing.
Great, okay. And we don't need to read this into the record because we've noticed it before. So who is representing Jackie? Who is here to represent the application?
Hello, I believe it's.
Joel is coming in.
Yeah, from Key Capture.
The names?
You know what? I don't have the names per se. I'm sorry.
Joel Dinara, I think is one.
Joel Richardson?
Yep. Is Taylor Quarles?
Joel Dinara.
Hello.
Hi. Is John Anzalone with you?
Yep, it's also gonna be John Anzalone. And I see.
Okay, John Anzalone and Taylor Quarles.
And Brian Morelli. Well.
And that's everyone from our side.
Brian Morell. Okay, great. Okay, can you give us a brief overview of the application for the public?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. John Anzalone of Power Speech P L L C 333 Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite 901, Uniondale, New York 11553, attorneys for the applicant. Thank you for the opportunity to make this project overview presentation. Here at respect to Key Capture Energy's pre-application filings concerning the site plan and the two-lot subdivision for an 8.25-acre parcel located within the highway business zone at 302 and 310 West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bay, New York, which the applicant is in contract to purchase and develop. In lieu of presenting the same testimony materials we previously presented to this board, we will limit our presentation to addressing the issues raised at the March 10, 2022, hearing, which broadly relate to height, design, and setbacks of the lightning mast and H-frame connecting the substation to the LIPA transmission line, sound attenuation and mitigation for the project, safety of the project relative to surrounding community, and overhead wires connecting the substation to the LIPA transmission line. With us tonight in support of the application, we have Mr. Phil Dinara, the applicant, who will discuss how the site will be regulated, the lightning mast, H-frame, project safety components, and interconnection with the LIPA transmission line. Joel Richardson of H2M Architects and Engineers is here and will discuss the sound analysis that was prepared for this project and the compliance of the onsite sound with applicable standards. Joel is also available to answer any questions regarding the site layout and design and outreach to local fire districts and Town Division of Fire Prevention. Finally, we also have with us Mr. Taylor Quarles, Vice President of Development for Key Capture Energy. It is our understanding that this board had a work session in April 12, 2022, with respect to battery energy storage uses. Each of the experts is available to answer any questions this board may have regarding battery energy storage uses in general, in addition to this specific project. Before the experts testify, to briefly summarize, as I noted earlier at the suggestion of this board, Joel Richardson began outreach to the local fire departments and Town Division of Fire Prevention. Joel was advised by the Town Division of Fire Prevention to not reach out to the East Quogue and Flanders Fire Departments until the initial coordination with the Hampton Bay Fire Department was completed. After attempting outreach, it is our understanding that the Hampton Bay Fire Department does not review applications until they are referred by the Town Division of Fire Prevention. On April 12, 2022, the Town Division of Fire Prevention by Fire Marshal Chris Hanson confirmed that it does not refer applications to the local fire department until the Town Planning Department forwards the formal site plan, as the sheer volume of applications to the division precludes it from reviewing pre-application submissions. This fully corresponded with an earlier correspondence we received from the project's reviewer, Mr. Anthony Treza, who advised that the Town Planning Department is not allowed to refer a pre-application submission to the Town Division of Fire Prevention since the town code does not permit it. The applicant also reached out to P S E G Long Island regarding whether it would be willing to admit the burial of the approximately 130-foot length of wires between the existing LIPA Quog Tiana 69 kilovolt transmission line that P S E G Long Island maintains and the proposed substation that will be constructed by Key Capture Energy, conveyed to LIPA and maintained by P S E G Long Island. P S E G Long Island has not yet advised that the applicant may do so today. Here we note, however, that all high-voltage transmission infrastructure along P S E G's Long Island's Quog Tiana 69 kilovolt transmission line are currently above ground. This includes the existing substations located Old Depot Road in Quog, the Tiana Springville Road Substation in Hampton Bay, the DOT Yard Sunrise Highway Substation in Hampton Bay, to which the Canal Southampton application is proposed to be connected to, as is the North Sea Road Substation in Southampton, which is located approximately 3,500 feet as the crow flies from town hall, all of which conduct via overhead wires. For these and more technical reasons that will be explained later by Mr. Phil Dinara, we do not anticipate approval for this deviation from P S E G's Long Island standard to be forthcoming. Further, concerning the approximately 50-foot height of the lightning mast, I note that while the same are exempt from the town's height ordinance when approved by this board, there are telecommunications towers in the area. The proposed lightning masts are nearly a third of the height of the 150-foot-high monopole located two parcels to the east that was constructed in accordance with this board's 2017 approval. Unlike that pole, the 35-foot-high H-frame, 55-foot-high lightning mast, and lower substation equipment will be thoroughly screened from Montauk Highway by existing and proposed vegetation that will be shown in the simulations of the as-built post-construction visuals from Montauk Highway. Finally, I would like this board to note that pursuant to Town Board Resolution 2017-475, the Town Board established the goal to meet 100% of the electricity consumption needs through renewable energy sources by the year 2025. This is a separate but related goal from the state's 6-gigawatt energy storage mandate by 2030. Southampton has about 150 megawatt and 1,000 megawatt hours of peak load. This project can help the town satisfy the goal of meeting this peak load through renewable energy. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Phil Dinara of Key Capture Energy. Phil?
Thanks, John. Appreciate it. So I do have a presentation that I can share on my screen. We tried to keep it relatively brief as compared to last time, considering we've discussed many of these topics again, but did want to address some of the questions that were raised during the last hearing. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And please do feel free to chime in at any point. Really, the goal is just to address any questions that, again, that were raised during the last hearing as we move through our points here. So for anyone new to the hearing that was not on the last one, we are Key Capture Energy. We are a local company based in Albany, New York. We're about 72 people at this point, with about 35% of the team based in the capital region. We are a SUNY startup New York partner in partnership with SUNY Albany, and have hired a number of interns from the SUNY program that are now full-time employees. We prioritize New York State contractors and consultants. We currently operate the largest battery energy storage system in New York. That's our 20-megawatt facility in Stillwater. And we also operate a smaller 3-megawatt project that is contracted with Orange and Rockland in Orange County. We have about a gigawatt of projects under development within the state and about 2.5 gigawatts under development in New York, Texas, and Iceland, England, as well as some newer markets that we are now approaching. This is the proposed subdivision of the lot. You will see that this portion of the property here will be used for the battery energy storage development. And as John has noted, this will be the subdivided point of interconnection substation lot that would ultimately be conveyed to LIPA for a substation that would be managed and operated by P S E and G Long Island. And then, as the board has seen, but for anyone new to the hearing, this is the proposed battery energy storage system. So what you see here are battery modules which are aggregated into containers about the size of a shipping freight container. There are many of these on the property that are situated back-to-back. These are connected to medium voltage power conversion systems. This is a transformer and inverter, which is then connected to the main power transformer in the project's substation via underground conduit. The project's substation is connected to the point of interconnection substation via over-the-fence aluminum hard bus connection. And then the point of interconnection is connected to LIPA's grid, which is currently overhead and runs parallel to the back of the property and Long Island Railroad via an approximately 130-foot overhead cable. A few visualizations of the project. This is Montauk Highway facing west. These are actual simulations that were taken by H2M in the field and generated by their team. This is an actual depiction of what the property would look like. Going back to the site plan really quickly, you'll see that we are proposing a approximately 12-foot wall around the exterior of the battery energy storage system here. So moving forward to our next image, you can begin to see that wall, which is about 80, about 100 feet back from the property line, and in front of that is about 85 feet of existing vegetation.
And the purpose of that wall?
The purpose of the wall is for sound and visual mitigation. So actually, since the last public hearing, we have completed a sound study, which Joel will go into a bit of detail about. And also, from a visual perspective, we think it's valuable to have the wall there as additional mitigation behind the vegetation. And this is a third viewpoint. This is from Alamar Road. So these would be to the houses and commercial use to the east, sorry, to the west of the project. And again, you'll see that there's very little visual impact here. So one question that was raised during the last hearing was the proposed lightning mast and the point of interconnection and project substation, which John noted will be at a height of 55 feet. There were concerns about, you know, fall-down areas and safety of these heights. We just want to note that these will be designed with foundations that are tapered to avoid overturning. This will include a triangular base plate welded to the bottom, and fall zones will be accounted for in the final project design. All applicable codes and standards for the structural steel calculations of both the lightning mast and H-frames will be accounted for for the codes listed on the slide here. And this is also just a visualization of the nearby telephone antenna that John noted during his testimony. And then, in regards to the proposed overhead connection, this was obviously a point of discussion that we had during the last call. We did circle up a team and have a discussion. And as John noted, we also did reach out to P S E and G Long Island. From our perspective and based on our view of the project, there's no reliability benefit from going underground, and there's obviously no visual impact. For us, there would actually be more sensitive equipment exposed to weather. So, you know, of note, there is an existing multi-mile line, transmission line running from Quog Substation to Tiana Substation that runs parallel to the back of the property. So routing the connection from the transmission line into our substation at this specific location is not going to enhance the reliability of the electric grid, considering there's multiple lines of transmission line within the circuit and transmission easement. Further, as noted on the screen, there'll be additional equipment to be acquired on the pole infrastructure should we need to go overground. Specifically, there would be what's called terminators required. So these are noted here on the transmission poles. So these would otherwise not be required and are actually an additional equipment that would be exposed to weather in the environment and really increase the statistical likelihood of failure. And then, in terms of the actual interconnection process and approvals, I just wanted to make it very clear how this process actually works. So there's three different stakeholders involved in this process. So there's a New York Independent System Operator. So this is a non-for-profit organization that is responsible for administering the state's wholesale electricity markets and manages the interconnection and study process. There's a local transmission owner, which is, in this case, LIPA, which operates as a public benefit corporation. And they have a multi-year operation service agreement to manage their transmission and distribution system with P S E and G Long Island. And then finally, there's independent power producers like Key Capture that request access to electric grid through NISO's open access transmission tariff. So that's essentially what we are going to be working with with P S E and G to study the project. This process has already begun and will continue to do so. Key Capture is fully responsible for managing this project and in tandem with P S E and G's approval would be responsible for managing the construction of the point of interconnection substation that we're proposing. As I'm gonna actually hand it over to Joel now, just to give a bit of overview about the sound study that we completed, and then also a bit of overview of the outreach that we've completed to the local fire marshal and fire departments.
I do have one question on the presentation you just gave. I think what I was hearing is that the above-ground wiring is more, will be open to the weather and less reliable than underground. Did I misunderstand what you were saying?
Actually, our position is the contrary, that over, like, an underground connection will actually require additional infrastructure, specifically these terminators on the overhead turning poles that will be exposed to the environment. So instead of pulling the line directly into the substation, which would be carried on a secure steel H-frame, what you have to do is add additional more complex infrastructure to send the lines underground and into the point of interconnection substation for a very short distance, whereas the line that we're connecting to is already multiple miles long, and it's all overhead. So that, from our position, there's really no additional reliability benefit of going underground for this very short distance when there's 540 feet of overhead transmission line running parallel to the project and multiple lines of transmission line in this transmission easement.
Thank you for the clarification.
I have a question, Phil. Just about when you had the three tiers with LIPA and. Yes. So Key Capture Energy is a privately-owned corporation?
That's correct, yeah.
And when you have plans to subdivide, are you selling this portion of the property to P S E G and LIPA?
It would be conveyed to P S E and G and LIPA. We're not necessarily saying it, selling it to them. We're just conveying it to them as part of the substation infrastructure that would be built on the property.
So conveyed by deed?
Yeah.
So then, P S E G and LIPA then own this parcel?
Yes, they will own the subdivided parcel where the point of interconnection substation is located in.
But Council, do we have a? Can that just be deeded to? I mean, certainly on the subdivision process, but can it just be deeded to the power authority?
Any council or their council?
You. Our council.
Obviously, they, I mean, they can transfer the property any which way they want, and they can obviously do a transfer by virtue of a deed, sure.
Okay, that was my question, whether you, but primarily I wanted to establish that you are a private company.
Can I, can I ask a question, please? I note with your, I guess, like, right now we'll talk, your renderings of simulation. You know, obviously done photos taken in the summertime. Do you have any photos of these similar areas in the fall when there's no leaves in the tree?
That's a fair question. We don't. That's something that, if that was of interest to the town as part of the secret review, we'd be happy to include a leaf-off version.
Well, I think it will be, you know, it's obviously a different simulation that you will see. You know, there's avenues maybe from Google Earth, a street view from Google Earth, at the correct time, or whatever source you might need to get it, right? I think that would be of interest to see what it looks like when we don't have leaves in a tree, which is, you know, as you know, is five months of the year.
Yeah, that's a fair question and something that Joel's team has worked on in the past when we took photos onsite during the summertime and then needed to go back and create a rendering with the leaf-off version. So duly noted and something that we can work on as part of our full application.
Yeah, and, you know, the idea that, you know, we have X number of miles of feet of overhead power line, so there's no point putting 200 feet on the ground. Really is, to me, not a really valid argument, right? Because we do minor subdivisions and new construction where we we ask, we ask people or require them to put the lines underground, even though there's tens of, tens of miles of overhead wire. And we have municipalities spending money, large sums of money to put all their wires underground along main streets. And, you know, so there's a trend to put this on the ground, and I don't think that's really such a solid argument that, you know, that won't necessarily improve the reliability because we have all, it's an incremental thing, and, you know, maybe, maybe in time, everything will be underground.
Yeah, understood that the transition is definitely trending towards an underground conduit for high-voltage transmission. I would say because this line is already overhead, and it's such a short distance that in this case, it does make sense. And as I noted, there would be, you know, specific equipment at the location just to bring it underground and back overhead. If the entire line was already underground, it would be a bit easier and probably the best route. But, you know, our position is to go underground for this very short distance for an overhead line doesn't necessarily make sense, but it's something that we can continue to explore with P S E and G as we work through the interconnection study process. But as John noted, it's just not the appropriate timing to make that final decision, but it's something we'll continue to consider. But it would ultimately be a question of what is the most reliable path for interconnection? And if that happens to be underground and it seems feasible, it's something that we can definitely consider.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions before I pass it over to Joel?
Thank you.
All right. Good evening to the board. My name's Joel Richardson. I'm a civil engineer with H2M Architects and Engineers located at 538 Broad Hollow Road, fourth floor east, Melville, New York 11747. Since the last hearing that we had on this project, H2M engaged an acoustical sound consultant named Ace and Tech to do a noise evaluation for the proposed development for the battery energy storage project. We had Ace and Tech evaluate the noise that would be generated from the project and compare it to the code requirements for the town of Southampton. The town has a nighttime limit of 70 decibels and a daytime, I'm sorry, opposite of that, a daytime limit of 70 decibels and a nighttime limit of 55 decibels. We had Ace and Tech evaluate the resulting noise that would be generated at the property line, which is what is regulated by the town's code. And in addition to the evaluation of the property line, we evaluated six of the closest residences that would be sensitive receptors that would experience any kind of increase in noise from the project site. Ace and Tech's evaluation modeled the project. They modeled each of the sound generating devices, which include the battery containers, the inverters that are associated with the battery containers. There's a main power transformer associated with the project's substation and a couple of air conditioning units that would be associated with control buildings on the project's substation and the point of interconnection substation. Ace and Tech's model also incorporated the sound attenuation and mitigation walls that we, I think Phil noted on the site plan surrounding the battery storage container layout and also partially surrounding the main power transformer. Based on our sound consultant's evaluation, we concluded that there would, at no point along the property line would the the noise generated from the project exceed the nighttime limit of 55 decibels. And at the adjoining residential receptors, the increase over ambient, which is something that that the New York State D.C. provides some guidance relative to, would be minimal between 1 and 4 decibels at those.
Joel, I'm sorry to interrupt. What about low-frequency reverberation? Was that part of your study?
The evaluation by our, but let me just preface this. I'm not an acoustical engineer. I'm not an expert on this. We engaged an acoustical expert to provide the study, but they did evaluate at every, at every octave band across the noise spectrum. So there was an evaluation at low frequency.
Yeah, sometimes those low frequencies, you feel them more than you actually hear them, and you could shake your house a little bit.
Yeah, in fact, I should also add that the model that we had prepared was based on spectral data that was provided by, in this case, the manufacturer of the battery containers and the inverters. It's a firm called Sungrow. That's the one that we're looking at using for this project right now. We obtained spectral data from, and sound pressure levels from testing that Sungrow had done and incorporated that into the model. So we modeled each one of the battery units using that data that was provided. I can't speak completely to the evaluation and, you know, the results at each octave band and what those impacts would be. But it is the case that we're meeting or exceeding the requirements of the town's code in all locations along the property line.
But I guess, I guess a simple test would be, do you have, do you have systems like this up and running in a, in a in a similar size and scope?
Yeah, so I can jump in, Joel. So, so, yeah, I mean, we've obviously have a number of operating projects that we've been able to learn from. And, and, and the, when we present project designs to the town, we spend a lot of time thinking about, you know, the most. Recent updated and deployable technology on the market, which is why we selected this solution from Sungrow. Um, and we're actually working with Sungrow right now to build about over three hundred megawatts of of. This specific technology in in Texas right now. So we're very familiar with the with this equipment. Um, and and will be owning and and operating it in the very near future. Um, the the sound studies, the, sorry, the sound data and the octave band data that was provided by Sungrow. Was completed in their factory and and actually per request from Key Capture, because we'll be one of the first companies to deploy. This specific technological technology solution. So by the time this project were to be built in the twenty twenty five timeframe, we already. Would have had a number of years of experience operating this system. Um, and ensuring that it was safe and 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 been able to, you know, complete all the necessary field tests.
So the sound studies weren't actually done in the field. They were done in.
They were done with this specific unit um. From Sungrow directly out of the factory, so the the exact octave band and. Uh, each tonality and frequency that was analyzed as part of the sound study was this specific unit that we are proposing.
So are you saying that you don't, you've never used Sungrow in the field? So you have no way of knowing?
No, we we have a way of knowing. Sungrow tested um through, you know, standard noise procedure, this specific unit's sound output. At every frequency level. And then that was baked into the sound and acoustic modeling that was performed by our consultant. Which essentially included um an A weighted um D B A measurement. Um, which factors all of the different frequency bands and octave bands um that are emitted from this specific unit that we are proposing.
So it was sort of a laboratory test, not in the field, as Craig asked.
It it was, it was in the fields. Um, it was outs- it was a unit that was outside, you know. Connected to, you know, the appropriate voltage and 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 operated at full power output as it would um at the specific location.
The test was done with one, right?
Um, I I imagine they did some sort of redundancy test.
Units are you proposing in this application?
There's, there's, so there's, there's two hundred and twenty four. Um, total battery containers, but they're grouped into to groups of four, so a hundred and sixty eight groupings of four. But the um, the the model that Acentec, our our sound consultant utilized. Um, modeled all of the units um and added them together to to generate the total noise output from the project.
Mathematically.
That's correct. It's a, it's a model, yes.
Can I ask one, one, one question, Joel? Um, going back to your modeling and you found, you sound, uh, you know, what you model at the property boundaries, for example. That was based on a twelve foot wall, which you said this is a twelve foot concrete block wall you're you're proposing around the structure?
No, it probably will not be concrete block. We haven't designed the wall. There's specific parameters that uh the model incorporates. I'll tell you what those are. Um, it's an S T C twenty five or higher rating for the noise mitigation. The it's a, it's a perforated wall that's filled with uh with um with a a noise dampening material. But it's not, I I don't believe the one that we would choose to use would be concrete block.
So we've um, we've solicited proposals for a number of um wall manufacturers. Um, all of them greatly exceed the the minimum required requirement that Joel noted was S T C twenty five. Um, currently, we're contemplating some sort of steel wall that would be slid into columns.
But you're still talking about a twelve foot high wall, whatever this construction, so. How does that conflict with, obviously a conflict with the town code on battery battery storage system, which. Mandates a. You know, enclosure by a fence to a maximum height of six feet. Is that how, how do you get around that code requirement from the town, you know, the spot of the town code?
Well, I'll I'll let, I'll let John speak to the specifics, but I, my understanding is that we would. Anticipate of requesting a variance for the the height of the walls.
That would be correct. If we had applications to the border zoning appeals, it would be our responsibility to meet the five factor test. Except by the New York State Town Law. Uh, but yes, that would be in short answer, it's a variance of the special perimeter criteria.
So can I suggest that the part of what you're doing, it's um might be prudent to. Do a modeling of a six foot wall as well in case you do not get a variance twelfth feet, so. Information can be available as well. That's what the sound levels are, property boundaries and off and off site.
You certainly take that under consideration, I'll defer to Joel and and Phil to that.
It can be modeled. I mean, it can be prepared. Um, I, we we specifically modeled the the twelve foot barrier. In order to to mitigate the noise that would be generated from the. Battery units, so it was a a selection that we made based on the design.
So if you have a six foot wall, you're not going to mitigate noise?
I I can't, I can't speak to what the modeled results would be right now.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking for the ma- for the results right now. Yeah, we understand that. You understand you haven't done the work, but, you know. If it could cause a six foot wall and we're presenting information to the public and to to. Authorities based on a twelve foot wall, then it's kind of um. You know, it's almost dependent and you're getting a variance. Okay, thank you.
I understand.
There was a next, next phase of this presentation?
Phil, do you want me to speak at all to the outreach to the?
I mean, the the only other uh comment that we noted from the last hearing was that we should reach out to the local fire departments. Joel, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of outlining status to date and and what we plan to do um following this hearing. Um, or following a site plan application.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think John covered some of this in his uh introduction. In fact, before we even had the the prior hearing, we had initiated outreach to Hampton Bay's Fire District. Uh, subsequent to the hearing, we further reached out to contacts we had at East Quogue. And Flanders, um, we we did have some conversations with um Hampton Bay's and East Quogue. Um, Hampton Bay's indicated that we should be routing any kind of um. Reviews that they would do through the town's planning department, specifically the uh Department of Fire Prevention. Subsequent to the hearing, I had conversations with Anthony Treza and Chris Hanson and the Department of Fire Prevention. And we, we made some efforts to see if we could engage with um the fire department. Uh, and it was um advised by both Anthony Treza and. Fire Marshal Hanson, that it would be inappropriate to have those uh coordinated reviews completed. Or engaged with by the fire department during the pre-application stage, that it would be more appropriate during the. Uh, formal site plan application, so we'll continue our communication with the fire marshal and with. Um, and we'll reengage with the fire departments when. Uh, the timing is appropriate based on our formal site plan application submission.
Anyone else presenting something? Because we do have some questions from the public.
So just before we uh we hear from the public, I just want to say there's just a few other bases I just want to mention. Uh, battery energy storage facilities are are limited where they can be sighted due to technical requirements of the Long Island's electrical utility system. And the property is uniquely suitable for this facility, given its proximity to existing load centers and it's a immediate location south of a major distribution line. Unlike other potential uses of this property, the improvements will have minimal impact on existing public infrastructure. Once in operation, it'll be unmanned. And it will not generate daily vehicular traffics nor onsite parking. Moreover, unlike other feasible developments and they have highway business zone. There will be no water use except for maintaining the vegetation, no septic required, no population. That's the edit. The site obviously will also be designed to ensure that all drainages retain on site. There will be no fumes, solid waste, gases, vapors, orders of uh pollution. Or or order of odors generated by the improvements as well. Uh, the project was designed to utilize and supplement existing vegetation to screen the property and the wall that was mentioned from the Navy and Residence and Montauk Highway. Uh, finally, the proposed project represents applications of green technology. Uh, that conforms to Lipas' goals for energy efficiency. The Public Service Commission's order establishing energy storage goal and deployment policy. And the town's twenty twenty five goal for renewable energy. So with that being said, we've uh just requested the opportunity to respond to any questions to the public may raise.
I just have one quick one. Uh, how much of the eight point two five acre parcel will you be clearing?
It will be approximately, I believe, Joel, sixty six percent. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And just as a point of reference, the prior approval at this site, which was approved for a multifamily residential development, who I think was approved at eighty two point. Uh, three percent clearing.
I don't think they're apples, uh, and apples actually, because, you know, residential development has lots of landscaping and buffers, et cetera.
Yeah, they had a lot of landscaping that where they were clearing it and then.
Yes, compare sixty six percent clearing with eighty some odd percent clearing. Charles, are there some people I see in the chat?
Yes.
Margaret Friedlander, can she?
And Christopher is next after.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Margaret Friedlander. Um, F R I E D L A N D E R. I'm a resident Hampton-based. Do you need any other additional information before I begin?
That's, that's it, Margaret. That's good.
Thank you. Um, thanks for having this public hearing. I joined you back on March tenth at the prior public hearing. Um, and I appreciate the follow up. Uh, just want to go on the record that I do understand. The benefits of a Bess and 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 aren't particularly opposed to the the theory and the need behind it. I'm concerned about the subject site location, and I just want to reiterate for the record that I did resubmit my prior letter again. For this um four twenty eight hearing. And then submitted another letter to the board uh via email with attachments. Um, the attachments that I've sent to the board for entering into the public record. Uh, and including queries about your knowledge of them, which you were very transparent about, you know. My takeaway was that you were not familiar was what uh the N Y S E R D A battery storage unit. Uh, guidelines. Uh, I've subsequently set um the Model Law, which is also associated with that document. I've also associated, uh, sent the uh six N Y C R R P. C R R part six one seven, that's part of SECR, which is referenced in that document. Um, and then uh again, uh, my letter. So my point being is. My concern is mostly um how Southampton Town, not just the planning board. Is approaching, approaching the concept of battered battery energy storage systems. And from what I've read and in the letter I submitted today, um, that it is really ba- based on certain pages. Within the Model Law that I sent you, that the advice is to appoint a battery energy storage task force. And that would represent indicated stakeholders, including municipal officials, interested parties, um. Relevant uh authorities having uh jurisdictions, such as what you're saying with the the fire department and fire marshals. Because it makes little sense, and I'm sure based on what I've been hearing from the board, you agree to not work in silos. This is beyond just a residential or business application. This is something pretty um extreme. And has a lot of arms and legs. And then in addition to that, there's a matter of what tier this Bess is. Uh, if it's tier two, um, it it's my understanding um that it requires a secret review. Um, and that the site plan application has very specific requirements. According to the Model Law in that N Y S E R D A. And I don't know if uh when that kicks in, if it kicks in at the pre-application or afterwards. But I guess my take. That I want to leave the board with is, besides other concerns that people have in terms of noise. Um, I had a personal experience um where. The D E P was called because I lived in a city in an apartment. And above a rooftop that was below mine was a huge air conditioning system. And whenever the D E P would go out to take a measurements of the noise decibels. They would never turn the full system on and they would only check each individual element of the complete system. And each individual element in and of itself never exceeded the legal and allowable. Reverberation or noise levels, but when the whole system was turned on, which they never did when the D E P was there. It was like being out on the airport of a plane runway. Um, and so I just want to. You know, I'm not saying that this is, that anybody's trying to be deceptive at key capture or anything. I'm just saying there's different ways to test things and it's kind of like. To your point that you've heard, some of you already mentioned, it has to be like fully up and running. And and tested, you know, in a real life model. And I thank Key Capture for providing some of those um visuals. And I agree that we should see what it looks like when it's all not all leafed out and all. I had asked and suggested. During the last last hearing, they provide what I called an I R L, which is an in in real life rendering. Um, and it seems that they followed through, so I appreciate that. So um, the the is the other question I have for the board. Is this this part of and included in Southampton Town's tenure plan?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Because that's part of the Model Law as well. It talks about um, again, requirements and steps. Of it being included in a comprehensive plan. And if it's not already included in a comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan needs to be revised. To include a battery energy storage system. So I guess um, just from a protocol standpoint. I think it would behoove everybody, and I know you guys were very transparent again about having limited knowledge about this new technology. And I have taken the time to educate myself and read these documents. Um, so I just would like to impress upon the planning board that. I respectfully think it goes beyond just your jurisdiction. I mean, this is really. Um, a lot of departments, and I think the example of getting the fire department and the fire marshal to the table is kind of proof. Of some of this challenge. So if you don't have a task force. That are, it is doing, conducting the meetings and and collaboratively communicating and everybody's working in silos. And kind of basing it on. Prior uh protocol, this is something really new, and I think it needs to be. You know. Revisited in terms of what those protocols are. So um, if you can take the time to read the letter, I kind of highlight some of those documents. That I've attached for the record and again, I I appreciate the time.
Well, Margaret, um, I love the idea of a battery storage task force. And I think you should share it. Your your letters are phenomenal, the the knowledge you bring, and we, I know that this board truly appreciates it. And um, we will certainly bring this up to, you know, local town government. That perhaps we should consider, like strongly consider, starting a battery storage um task force. I think it's a phenomenal idea.
Uh, thank you. Oh, and I just, I'm sorry, really quick. I do want to mention one more thing. I did see from the four fourteen work session. There are two more um battery energy storage systems um that are before the board. Um, one at seventeen Larboard Road in Hampton Bay's and one at twenty four North Road in Hampton Bay's. But I, it could be, I missed something, but I didn't see. Who was attached to that. Um, and you know, who was asking for that or whether it was a pre-application. Um, but I would say that that. It it did say it was a tier three, it was over six hundred, whatever that um. That that um stat is in terms of the tier three or tier two. Um, it was that and it would require, it's even on architect, uh, archaeologically sensitive area, um, one of them. So um, anyway, I just want to bring that up. Thank you. I'm happy to contribute or participate collaboratively. With whatever this is, I think again, to me. Based on my conversations with, I I am not representing the Hampton Bay C A C at all. I'm talking as a resident. But I am the secretary and member of the Hampton Bay C A C and just with discussions with other interested parties. I think again, people are just super sensitive about the site location.
Margaret, I'd like to thank you for sending. Margaret, I'd like to thank you for sending, uh, everybody on the board the nicer guidelines. Early on, they were very helpful, appreciated. And so the takeaway that I'm getting is that a task force and include, create some kind of, include this in a comp plan. Uh, you know, I, I hear you in that we're looking at these piecemeal uh, without some kind of organized master plan around them. Um, but it was our understanding and, um, John, maybe you could, uh, illuminate us on this, but it was LIPA and P S E G that were presenting these sites to private developers. In other words, this is where we have a substation and, you know, if there's property nearby, you can consider battery storage. So they were sort of leading the charge. I don't know if that's absolutely accurate. You're shaking your head.
No, uh, that's, uh, I don't believe that's accurate. And I'll defer that, uh, question to Phil Danero, who's, uh, much more intimately familiar with your answer than Naya.
Sure. Thanks, John. Um, so there was certainly an, an RFP for, from P S E and G Long Island for utility scale battery storage. Um, but they did not present, uh, and they did present some locations throughout Long Island where they have existing generation assets. And they offered up those locations for projects. But additionally, um, where they were not offering up land, they were soliciting projects directly from developers. Um, so this was an RFP for up to a hundred and seventy five megawatts. Um, their review process is still ongoing and decisions are expected in August. I will note that, um, this was one solicitation. Um, there's been numerous power grid studies that have been performed, um, you know, for the entire state in terms of uh, analyzing the, the clean energy goals, um, by both the New York Independent System Operator, as well as, um, various third party consultants that have determined the need for multiple gigawatts of energy storage, both in New York City and on Long Island. Um, so I would expect that to be, you know, various projects that are developed on, on private land that are, that is acquired by developers such as ourselves, as well as some projects that are proposed directly at existing incumbent generation. But, but that is generally the landscape. Um, this was one solicitation, but there'll be, um, likely more to come either directly with P S E and G Long Island or other, um, incentive mechanisms. For example, um, Nicerda, um, releases um, various RFPs in order to contract with storage projects as well. Of note, the recent offshore wind solicitation that is expected to be that a draft RFP has been released and that a formal RFP will, will be released shortly. Um, does allow for energy storage to be included in a bid with offshore wind. So, um, as you can see, both Nicerda, P S E and G, and other stakeholders are figuring out ways to, to, to contract, um, as much energy storage as possible to support a hundred percent renewable energy on, on Long Island's grid.
Okay.
Jackie, if I could ju-
Yeah.
Jackie, if I could just add, um, from the comp plan perspective, um, the town did adopt the sustainability plan several years ago, which is now part of the comp plan, which speaks to energy independence. The plan itself doesn't speak to specifics because the technology and the industry is evolving so rapidly. But there is at least in the comp plan, the need to address things like battery storage. May not as specific as we might like today, but it, it is there.
Great. Thank you, Lauren.
Christopher is next.
May I, um, really quickly just address one part of the public comment? I just wanted to note that, um, we will be submitting a full environmental assessment form and undergoing the secret review process. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear, um, and that will be submitted in tandem with their site plan application.
Thank you. Um, Christopher Carriello. Would you like to speak? You're, you're muted. You're muted.
Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Now we can, yes.
All right. Sorry about that. I'll introduce myself first. Uh, my name is Christopher Carriello. I'm a long-term resident of Hampton Bayes, born and raised, as well as a small business owner in Hampton Bayes. Um, between me and my family, we own three businesses surrounding the, uh, property in question. Um, I also have a statement from John Tortorella, who is, uh, my neighbor, as well as, um, majority business property owner around the area. Um, so basically I just want to start off, I have a lot of questions. Um, this whole program, this whole proposal was only brought to my attention today um, by a woman named Geraldine Spinella, who I, I think is affiliated with the, a town board of some sort. Um, but, uh, it was also only brought to Mr. Tortorella's attention about a week ago. It was, we weren't, we did, uh, hear that, you know, the neighboring businesses were informed ahead of time that this was happening, but we didn't hear anything about this. Um, so a couple of my questions. The visual impact walls, as they were described by the, uh, applicant, will they be upheld by the town? Um, the rendering, as far as the vegetation in front of the walls, it looked great in their rendering. But is that something that is going to be contingent on the sale of the property? Is, is that a determining factor of whether or not, you know, if they, if they say that, oh, these walls are going to go up and there's going to be plenty of tree covering, so you don't see it from the road? What if after they build it, that's not the case? Is that, you know, is that going to be something that is going to be needed to be upheld by the applicant? Another one of my questions would be the decibel test that they referenced. Um, it seems to be very speculative and contingent. Uh, they said that, you know, it was a model rendering, it was done with one of the units and then amplified, you know, multiplied and um, I feel like a real world test would really need to be done to figure out exactly the impact to the surrounding area. Um, you know, very often, things that are done on a computer, uh, are not exactly what happens in real life. Um, if, if it's such a low, you know, he said, I forget the gentleman's name, but it was going to be a four to five decibel increase in ambient noise in the area, then why would they be planning for a twelve foot wall to, to mitigate the, um, mitigate the noise in the surrounding area? If it's such an in inconsiderate amount of increase in decibel, why the need for a twelve foot wall to keep the, keep the sound down? I, I think that that would be overkill and, um, you know, fifty five decibels at night. If it's going to be considerably under that and a household air conditioner or a generator uh, would produce, you know, less, less decibels than that, then why the need for this overkill of a giant wall to mitigate the sound? Um, it just seems as if they are planning for a large impact of sound to the area. Uh, another thing would be, um, is the town going to review these studies? Um, I understand that the company, you know, s- put in all these, um, studies that they say that they did um, with, with independent researchers as far as the the redundancy tests and the sound modeling, um, are these going to be actually looked into by other professionals than who they hired to do these tests? Is the town going to take the time to look into this and make sure that it's accurate? Or are we just taking their word for it?
No, we have, we, we have to do that by code. If we do secret, we have to have.
Now, would, would the town be doing their own tests? Or would they be hiring a firm to do their own tests? Or how would they go about reviewing to make sure that that is accurate?
The way it typically, typically works is that, that we would hire, um, a specialist in that field to review that particular, uh, study.
Okay. Um, uh, let's see, what else did I have here? Um, the only other thing I would have to say is, um, the, I forget who, um, I only saw her initials, M F, the last speaker. She spoke, uh, Margaret. Uh, Margaret spoke of, uh, three total plans for battery storage, um, in the town of Hampton Bayes. I, I just, I don't quite understand why, you know, Hampton Bayes would be the target for these facilities. Um, especially Main Street in a commercial, uh, commercially zoned area where we have a lot of residences around this particular property on, um, West Montalk Highway, as well as businesses, um, to, to do a, a more industrial zoning of the area when it's, you know, mostly commercial and residential. I don't know why. I understand that they said it's suitable for the facility because of the LIPA access and all that. Yeah, it's great that it's suitable for this facility, but is it suitable for the town? Is it suitable for the, for the people that live and own businesses in this town? You know, I don't think that it's our concern how great of a location it is for this one company. I think it's more of a concern how it's going to impact the residences. There, there's a lot of residences around this property. It's not just businesses. There's, on Alomera Drive alone, there's at least six houses. Um, on my property, there's three residences. Um, there's, you know, Panorama Glass is one of the businesses I own. One North Steakhouse is the other business I own. Um, John owns the car wash and everything else, you know, it's, it's just, it's not the development I would want to see for the west side of town. I was always hoping that that property would be developed into something more more commercial and, um, you know, or residential, but to, to turn it into more of an industrial area. I mean, would, would the town, would the town allow this to happen in the village on, on Job's Lane? You know, to put in an industrial battery storage facility? I just feel like Hampton Bayes is is somewhat neglected when it comes to what we allow and what we don't allow. And, um, I don't think that this would be allowed in the village and I don't know why it's allowed on Main Street Hampton Bayes. So that's my only concern.
Okay, thank you. Charles, is there anyone?
Yes, I have one more. R D.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry, I'm having a lot of difficulty here.
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Actually, I went to town hall. I thought the meeting was also in person. So I'm a little discombobulated, but, uh, let me just, give me a second to try to get. My name is Ray DeAngelo. I'm a Hampton Bayes resident. I'm also a member of the H B Hampton Base, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee, and also a retired New York City Fire Department firefighter. And, uh, I know, uh, I don't know, I, I haven't, unfortunately, I didn't hear the whole meeting, but I don't know if you guys covered the problems with these systems. They, these best systems pose a significant fire and explosion, uh, explosion hazard. Uh, the lithium batteries, uh, when they malfunction or the damage give, give off, uh, as they, uh, from the damage date, uh, expel, uh, hazardous gases. And this usually is accompanied with overheating of the batteries. And eventually there's a fire and explosion. And, uh, this recently, uh, there's been quite a few of these incidences, uh, with these facilities. Okay. You really can't extinguish a lithium battery fire. They cannot be extinguished by regular conventional means. Usually they have to burn themselves out. And the fire departments, uh, when they're called, really, uh, concentrate on cooling the rest of the facilities. Uh, and these are very, very serious fires. In two thousand nineteen in Arizona, uh, at one of these facilities, uh, seven firefighters were severely injured, two of them were fatally when, uh, one of these containers caught fire and they developed, uh, a kind of, uh, what, what happens, they call, uh, just give me a second here, um, a little. The process is called a thermo runaway. Now what happens is, is one battery is damaged, it gives off gases and everything, it continues to overheat. It passes it on to the next adjoining battery. And this is, uh, you know, a chain reaction. And before you know, you have a very, very high gas mixture. And then as the heat increases in these facilities, there's an explosion that happens. And it can spread to their adjoining container, the, the other, the next shipping container. And usually, uh, when it gets to that, when you get into that, uh, thermo runaway, the whole facility is destroyed. Uh, that's what happened in, in Arizona. Uh, recently, uh, which is, it wasn't a, uh, storage, uh, a battery storage unit, but there was a ship that was carrying four thousand uh, red electric vehicles made by Volkswagen, many, many of them were Porsches and whatnot. And one of the cars with the storage pack in, uh, package in it erupted and, you know, erupted, set the car on fire and then the chain reaction developed. And basically melted the whole ship. The ship sank with the four thousand cars. It was like an eight hundred million dollar loss. I mean, everybody had to be evacuated, the ship sank. These are very hazardous facilities. Uh, and you know, we have a, and I'm not trying to denigrate our fire department, but we have a volunteer fire department. Uh, the determining factor in these things is the training, the pre-fire planning. And also it comes down to one basic problem, the water source that they have. You need copious amounts of water to fight these fires. So I don't hear, I tend, I, I, like I said, I didn't hear the whole, uh, meeting. Unfortunately, I went to town hall. I thought it was in two places. But these are all things that we should take into consideration. Again, I'm not against these things. I, I realize that, you know, we want to go to sustainability and everything. But, uh, I'm especially troubled that all three of these facilities want to be planned in Hampton Bayes. I mean, I think they would be more suitable like at the airport, West Hampton. They should be in industrial sites. And the other problem with this, when you throw copious amounts of water in this, the wood is well contaminated. They give a lot of very bad chemicals. The wood has to be collected and treated. So I mean, uh, this all has to be taken into consideration. So I mean, uh, this thing is being dropped on us. I think it, we have to be very, very careful uh, where we place it. If they do catch on fire, you have to know that, you know, we, we can't have people, the exposures that, uh, right next to these facilities, they'd have to be evacuated because, you know, there'd be clouds and clouds of poisonous gas generated by these fires. And this, uh, first site down on, uh, which is near, uh, the West Hampton, uh, the West, uh, Montalk Highway side, I forgot the address. I don't have the address yet. I was there, I visited the site and exposure one, which would be Montalk Highway, and exposure three, which is the railroad. Well, if there's a fire there, the fire department operation might be there for four or five days. I mean, they would have to shut Montalk Highway and they have to shut the railroad there. I mean, I, this is a very troubling location. And now these other locations, I don't know if they have the water, the water mains, uh, uh, if the water mains adequate in those, uh, to fight these fires that could generate, that they could generate. And again, this is not such an uncommon occurrence. Uh, in two thousand seventeen and seven, two thousand seventeen and eighteen, they have two fires in Belgium with these facilities. And in South Korea, where there's a lot of these facilities, they had twenty six of them in the last four years. So I think we have to really move on this very cautiously, because it's a safety issue. A severe safety issue and it, and I don't know, it, part of the problem is that these is, these are all new technologies. We're not really even sure how to fight these fires. So I just urge the board to go very slow on this and be very careful with their decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeAngelo.
Yeah, we have a few more people.
Okay.
Geraldine is next.
Uh, Chairwoman Lafara, would you like me to respond to the comment? I know we discussed, um, fire safety a bit last time. I'm happy to respond now. I'm also happy to reserve comment or, um, have a discussion at a later point in time.
Yeah, well, let's just get some of the other, uh, public participants in and then you can respond, fire being one.
Sure.
Geraldine? Yes, Geraldine, you're muted. You're muted. There you go. Hold, hold on for just a second. Your audio is off. Charles, do you have any suggestions?
Not really.
The, the, the audio is very, um, like muted and altered. We can't really understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's super distorted. By chance, do you have like earbuds like this with a little microphone?
That should clear it up.
If we can't get you to testify clearly, you'll have to just put it in letter writing and get it to us as soon as you can.
Or an email.
Yeah, or an email. Geraldine, what is your last name? Okay. Okay, Michael, Michael DeCaro. Michael, you're on.
Michael, you're muted.
How about now?
Good.
My name is Michael DeCaro. I live at 80 Drew Drive in Eastport. I just want to say to the panel that this is bringing clean renewable energy to the area, not only just Hampton Bays. And it's going to have no visual impact and no traffic to the local area. This is all project is going to be done with local union labor as well. As a union labor myself, I always promote that. I know Long Island is always looking for clean and renewable energy. And it seems like a good, good start to the town of Southampton to get more involved in something like this.
Okay, thank you.
That's real. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Charles?
That's it. One more, one more.
One more.
I guess he changed his mind.
No.
Bruce, there is Bruce.
Bruce?
Yeah, he's coming.
Bruce, you're muted.
How's that better?
Perfect.
My name is Bruce Dasher. I'm a resident of Hampton Bays. I'm a retired member of IBEW Local 25. Start my video, starting my video. There I am. Okay, Local 25, I wanted to speak in support of this, this project. It seems like it's in very early stages. And I think of all, of all the remarks that I've heard so far, I just want to say my experience with public hearings on big projects goes back to the Canoe Place Inn. And there were many public hearings. And believe it or not, there was a lot of meat and potatoes in those public hearings. People brought up questions. There are fire, fire questions, the water main wasn't big enough for the part of the CPI on the west side of the can, on the east side of the canal, et cetera, et cetera. The county adopted a new form of septic system as an outgrowth of those hearings. This is worthwhile. These guys at Key Capture really impressed me. They're just, they're listening, they're doing their homework, they hear stuff. They go back, they're going to change it, they're going to fix it, they're going to find an answer. That's, that's the most I can say. I, I think, I think everybody here is on the right track. I think there's, there's distance to go, and I think it will be a successful project. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil, did you want to respond to the fire issue? Did you say?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And as, as you guys think about potential working groups or conversations to be held offline, whether it be regarding fire safety or otherwise. Of course, we stand by to serve as, you know, an industry representative and, and are happy to answer any questions. If I may just pull back up to my screen really briefly, I do have a a couple of just overview slides that may help the discussion. As Joel mentioned, there'll be a proactive outreach to the Fire Marshal and Fire Department, as well as the mutual aid departments. We like to have these conversations as early as possible. And we'll begin training the local fire departments for an emergency response plan throughout the development cycle, and then also during construction, and then annually after construction to ensure that everyone is aligned and on the same page as far as how we will approach safety for this project. In terms of the applicable codes and standards, this table here is a general overview. But as you can see, there's quite a stringent process to ensuring that these battery cells and systems are safe, including a number of factory tests where they stress out the batteries in order to comply with necessary codes before they can receive the necessary standards and, and be sold onto the market. So these are at the battery cell level, the battery module level, at the container level, and also construction requirements that are necessary. As we discussed during the last public hearing, there will be a battery energy management system at the module level that's detecting state of charge, voltage, temperature, any inert gases that are detected to be released from the system. In the case of any of those thresholds being met, that specific unit is completely isolated from the system and disconnected from any energy entering those battery cells. In the case that that does not stop a thermal runaway, there are fire suppression systems within the containers that would, that would be released in order to mitigate the fire hazard. We do acknowledge that there are fire incidences throughout the world regarding these systems. But I will note that Key Capture has been operating projects since 2016, and none of our operational projects to date have had any fire incidences. We take safety extremely seriously. And we have, you know, a data management process and are constantly revisiting safety as our number one priority as we move through this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there are no more questions. Can you, can you? Yeah, can you stop sharing your screen?
Yeah, sure, sorry.
Could I ask a quick question? Do you have any knowledge of this incident referenced in Arizona? 2019?
I, I do. Our team has reviewed the report in detail. I'd be happy to, to speak to it further if you'd like, but at a high level, there was a thermal runaway that occurred. The, the reason for the explosion and why people were hurt had to do with oxygen being entered into the container. So typically, what we recommend is defensive firefighting. So, you know, mitigating and spraying the system from afar. In this specific case, there was a local firefighter that responded to the incident before the emergency team went on site and I, I don't want to speak to the exact details, but I believe the container was opened, which introduced oxygen into a, a gas intensive environment, which ultimately led to the explosion, which is part of why we proactively reach out and train the fire departments to ensure that the emergency response plan is, is understood and documented and shared throughout anyone that would be entering the site.
Thank you.
There is another question or questionnaire. Sean.
Sean Mehan?
Yes, how you doing?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Sean Mann, a business representative from IBEW Local 25. I live at 36 Blackmore Lane in East Islip. About 2,000 active union members and about another thousand retirees. And we're very in favor of this project, just for the fact that, you know, the amount of green energy it brings in. It doesn't have a big impact in the, in the environment, in the area. It's something that we definitely want to, you know, move forward doing. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? We'll close this hearing with I think we have a 30-day written comment period. So I have a motion to entertain that.
Motion?
By Craig, seconded by Dennis, all in favor. Post extension, six in favor, one absent. I think we'll probably need two, right, for, one for the subdivision? Counsel, do you think we need two?
Yeah, we, we better do.
Okay, so a motion to close the site plan with 30-day written comment period. Moved by Dennis, seconded by by Gloria, all in favor. Post extension, six in favor, one absent. Okay, thank you very much for, for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to 361 Beach Road, George, would you like to? Do we have sufficient notice, counsel?
I'm sure we do.
We do, okay.
George? Yep, please take notice. The public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, April 28, 2022, at 7:00 PM to consider the pre-submission conference entitled 361 Beach Road. The subject project is for the site plan for the demolition of the existing commercial fishpacking building and the construction of a new two-story 40-foot by 75-foot commercial fishpacking building and office on a 46,611 square foot parcel with a commercial dock located in the RWB zoning district at 361 Beach Road, Hampton Bays. South County Tax Number 900-364-13.
Jackie is Melissa Dedovich.
Yes.
Yes.
Our president, Melissa Dedovich, Beconic Environmental Associates. I'm here with Bob Terry. If you could let him in as well, please.
He's coming.
Okay, he's here.
Okay, Bob, you have to unmute and video too. So we're here on behalf of 361 Beach Road LLC, which is Bob's company. Our, our presentation is going to be much quicker. We're pretty much taking the existing commercial fishpacking operation located at the property and upgrading it. We're here to answer any questions the board may have. It's the same use. It's in a resort waterfront business district. It's over, it's little over an acre, 1.07 acres. It's currently fully bulkheaded. It's currently already improved with an existing diesel gas tank, which is going to be upgraded. The existing building is going to be removed and replaced with a new two-story. It's going to be, let me see, a freezer, garage, and unlimited office space on the second floor, if I'm correct on that, Bob. And installation of a health department septic system to service a new building as well as appropriate drainage in the site. I'm sure you all, the whole board is very familiar with this property. It's been there, and it really hasn't had a TLC in a very long time. And I'll let Bob explain a little more about what the actual operation there is and what he wishes to do with the property.
Hi, anyone have a question first, or should I do a quick review?
Just state your name for the record, Bob.
I'm Bob Terry. I live at 50 West Neck Road in Southampton. I own the property now. I, I also, with my brother, own Terry Contracting, a local marine construction company.
Bob, do you want to explain what the use of the property is going to be and why you need what you're asking for?
Sure. I had been doing repairs to this property for years for the previous owner and occasionally used it to load a barge. We've been looking for a place in the town to try and do this. The previous operator was having trouble making it work. The fishing industry has scaled back over the years. There just aren't as many commercial boats and as much fish. And I talked to some of the fishermen and the trustees and talked to John Bennett, who was our attorney before we purchased it, and we met with the town and thought that we might be able to take over the operation, continue to run the fish, and then on occasion, use it for our own use when we need to load a barge. Since we took it over, we've been doing that for a little over a year now. And it's worked out okay. It's just that the building on the pier is in really poor condition. So our goal is to move it to build a new building in the parking lot right up against the existing loading dock so that we would keep the operation going. And then, after we move the fish operation into the new building, then we would take down the building on the pier, re-bulkhead it, and have more access to the pier.
I would note also, Bob Terry Contracting, they are one of the only marine contractors out here who are also do a lot of work with the Army Corps of Engineers. They were our contractors when we replaced and fixed the 1,000 linear feet of bulkheading located along Flying Point Road to prevent a breach there after Hurricane Sandy. They also did the dredging and the maintenance around the corner from here at the Coast Guard. I believe they handle a lot of Coast Guard contracts. But it's very hard for marine contractors to have a place where they can actually get access to the water, like right here, and be able to load these barges on the materials that they need. As you know, the trustees, especially in DC, prefer all of us to try to do as much work with regard to rocker vetements or replenishment or dredging from the water. And unfortunately, they're, believe it or not, even though we have some shoreline, there are very limited access ways to get machinery and everything to the water. And that's why Bob fortunately was able to get this property, and we're trying to make it work for them.
Kind of the way it worked out, or what we'd like it to work out to be, is that the fishing operation would help pay for the property because many times, like currently, we don't have any local work with our barges. For the most part, they're all in on the north shore along the sound. So there's long periods of inactivity with my work. But the fishermen come in six to seven days a week, whenever the wind isn't blowing. And I got to say, it's been a handful to take over that, but it's, it's gotten much smoother. The fishermen have been really cooperative. We've had to do a lot of repairs, you know, basically in a day when there's a collapse of a bulkhead or something. But it's held up, and they've been able to continue their operation. I grew up right across the Poncor Bridge and, in fact, worked in this industry as a kid. I would come down and help hand truck fish into the trailers that they now have forklifts for. But anyway, it's something I really do appreciate, the fishing industry. As hard as we think we work on the water, I, I don't want to do what they do. It's a lot tougher to be a commercial fisherman. So I do really respect what they do, and I know it's necessary for our tradition out here and for our local economy to, to maintain that fishing. It's the only commercial place. There were two in Montauk. Now there's one in Montauk, and now, and it's Shinnecott. That's it, this one.
I was going to say, there's no other place for these, for these guys to actually offload their fish to make it to market in New York City.
There's nowhere else other than Montauk where they do this on the South Fork. There's nowhere else other than Montauk where they do this on the South Fork.
Okay. I think you've explained it perfectly. Are there any questions from the board? Charles, is there anyone wishing to speak from the public?
See no hands.
Okay, since this is a pre-submission conference, I'll entertain a motion to close with a thirty day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor. Oh, subvention, six in favor, one absent. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The last application for the day is the enclave at Noyak. Do we have sufficient notice, counsel?
We do, Madam Chair.
Okay, Tom, you're going to read this into the record?
Yep, please take notice. A public hearing will be held at Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, April twenty-eighth to two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. To consider the pre-application entitled Enclave on Noyak. The application proposes a four-lot subdivision of five-point-three-eight acre property situated in the R forty zoning district, Aquifer Protection Overlay District, New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area partially, and W Q I High and Medium Priority Areas located at fifteen sixty-six Noyak Road, North Sea. Tax map number nine hundred dash thirty-three dash one dash ten point one.
Jackie, do you know who's representing the application? You're muted.
Oh, sorry, I believe it's Joe Lombardi and Elizabeth Vale. If they're available.
Is Joe Lombardi there?
Liz Vale is here. Liz, you just have to raise your hand.
Trying to get them in here. Everybody keeps denying. Okay. They're coming.
Okay. Liz, you're there.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Liz Vale from Greenberg Trower. I'm here tonight with Joe Lombardi from the Rayner Group.
Okay, want to give us a note? Give us an overview, Liz?
Absolutely. I believe Joe's actually going to introduce the project to you this evening for the hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, board members.
Good evening, board members. This is Joel Lombardi from the Rayner Group. We're at eight sixty Montauk Highway in Watermill. And we represent fifteen sixty-six Noyak LLC, which is seeking to subdivide a five-point-three-eight acre parcel into four lots for single-family residential use. Subject parcels located on the southerly side of Noyak Road, approximately one thousand seventy-three feet east of Peconic Hills Road. It's in the R forty zoning district and the Aqua Protection Overlay District. Previous owner of the property operated a landscaping business on the site for many years. A portion of the site was cleared for that use, and you can make it out in this aerial. I mean, examining aerials, the activities took place and clearing took place prior to nineteen eighty-four. And I know I've seen it in nineteen seventy-six aerial that shows some clearing on there also. On the pre-application map, we use topographic information from Suffolk County D P W maps of five eastern towns. In general, the elevations are between forty-five and fifty feet, located on the southerly side of the site with low elevations about thirty feet in the northeasterly corner. The most parts sloped are in the zero to ten percent range. There's a fifty-foot wide strip that extends from the bulk of the parcel to Noyak Road. The intent of the fifty-foot wide strip was to create a road right-of-way should this parcel be developed. There's even a turning radius on the westerly side of this access. Each of the proposed road, oh, I'm sorry. The proposed cul-de-sac will utilize the fifty-foot wide strip. Each of the proposed lots will have frontage on the cul-de-sac. No flag lots are proposed. Two maps have been submitted, a standard plat which is on the screen now, and a planned residential development. Standard plat has lots that range from fifty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-two square feet to fifty-two thousand five hundred square feet, the average being fifty-two thousand seventy-five feet. All four lots take access off the proposed three hundred and forty-six foot long cul-de-sac street. This is the applicant's preferred plan. The second map is a planned residential development. This has a required open space. As you can see, it's shaded. And the open spaces around the perimeter and in between lots. There really wasn't any attempt to create a single block of open space only because all of the parcels around the property are already developed in single-family residential use. There's no location that an open space be a place where an open space can be located that would be adjacent to other open space and make a larger contiguous open space area. Okay, so there's a Suffolk County water main, twelve inches, located in right-of-way from Noyak Road. One of the main extension is proposed and would be located within the right-of-way, oh, it's cul-de-sac, of the utilities, including P S E and G, Long Island, Telco, and Cable Vision are available on Noyak Road and will be extended to serve the proposed lots. Interesting, see the nineteen eighty-one tax map shows the subject parcels being four separate lots. According to the town G I S, the lots were merged around nineteen ninety-four and created the current configuration. What has any questions?
I can answer them.
Charles, is there someone wishing to speak? We've got something.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Eduardo.
Hello, everyone. I was Eduardo, actually.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
You give us your name, please, for the record.
My name's Eduardo Rodriguez. I live in fifteen ninety Noyak. It's in front of the location of the zone, the new zone.
Yes?
Yes, I have a question, just in, in general, on my, also, I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbor, but he is having issues. Vincent Lamano also, hopefully, we will speak. What I just had a question about, due to the new driveway, it's going to cause just a bit more traffic, but just for the environmental impact that's that's going to have, like, for the runoffs. How's this going to be assessed, or how's that come, how's that come into play?
You're asking about the runoff?
Yes, or like the sewer.
Joe, Joe, do you want to respond to that?
Sure. I think this subdivision may wind up firing a SWIP because typically when you do a subdivision, you have to take into account development on all of the lots as well as the road right-of-way. The SWIP will do that. All of the runoff from impervious surfaces on the property will be maintained on the property. That's a requirement. The same thing with the road right-of-way.
And the town engineer always ensures there's adequate drainage on site, especially for the driveway or access.
And then my other question is just for, just the environment, just itself, just the animals that cross. Because I believe before it was the, it wasn't just the landscaping, they had animals. We like that horses in the site, but deers and the turkeys kind of use that location. When they start building up, how is that going to affect the end? Does that mean there are, deer is going to kind of go towards more now towards the streets since they kind of use that area in the back just for mating and anything else, so the turkeys pass through there.
They'll find a way around the development, that's for sure. The deer go everywhere. They are not stopped by anything.
And and I think that there are some larger undeveloped properties to the east that may find refuge.
Yeah.
Deer find places to hide out. It's it's incredible just how small a patch of land they need to hang out during the daytime, and they typically come out in the evening hours to to graze and eat our gardens in the evening.
Yes.
But I mean, this is, this is a sad truth. We just, we, you know, we keep taking away their habitat. It's a, it's a, you know, it's a unfortunate byproduct of development.
Is that it, Mr. Rodriguez?
Ah, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
We're Vince for his questions, but it's not responding.
Okay, anyone else, Charles? Thank you.
There's no other hands. Oh, there is one now. Now there is. Okay, Carrie.
You're mute, Carrie.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
Can you put, can you put your video on there?
I just want to speak.
That's okay.
Just give us your name for the record, please.
Carrie Holger.
Forty-nine Woodland Drive, and I'm with Sampson and Jackie Guillot and thirty-seven Woodland Drive. So we actually went up to the meeting thinking it was there, all of us, and ended up on Zoom with you. But our goal is to ensure that trees are planted between the properties to assure there's a sound barrier and privacy. We also want to have a full understanding regarding the regulation of clearing of trees because the trees are pretty well cleared in some of the areas there already.
Okay. Do you want to answer that, Liz or Joe?
Yeah, our position is that the property is pretty substantially cleared. And it was cleared before the Aquifer Protection Overlay District came into play. Therefore, it's pre-existing non-conforming. With respect to requesting trees be planted as a buffer, we'll certainly bring that back to our client. That's a good suggestion.
Thank you so much. Because currently, Noyak Road is very busy and you know, with with the building and the property going up, it may cause a sound issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since since it is pre-existing non-conforming, do we still have the right when we go to with through side plan to impose buffer?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Back plan issue, yeah. No other questions? Nothing from the board? I'll entertain a motion to close with a ten-day written comment period.
Motion?
Motion by George, second by Gloria, all in favor. Oh, subvention, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Have a great evening.
Good night.
Bye bye, good night.
Hey, there's nothing more. We've got a long day. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
By Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Subventions, six in favor, one absent. We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Stay safe.
Yep.
Night.